I hereby call to order this committee of the whole meeting for Monday, May 13th, 2024. The time is 3:17 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Erin Stone?
Here.
John Caesaretti?
Here.
Anne Hart?
Here.
Bonnie Kim?
Here.
Allison Papless?
Here.
Amy Paley?
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Babes?
Here.
I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the April 15th, 2024 Committee of the Whole and Executive Session Meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the April 15th, 2024 Committee of the Whole and Executive Session Meetings.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? All members in favor of approving the minutes say yea.
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 Motion carries. As there are no--
Sorry, I think that we need to ask for a roll call because we have a remote participant.
Okay, thank you. We'll do that. Let's go back to that. Will the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Papless?
Yes.
Amy Paley?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Babes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes. Motion carries. As there are no items for facility development, we will begin with school finance. Mr. Caesaretti?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn it over to Cory because he has two items. Draft budget presentation for 2025 and transportation contracts.
All right, so we've completed our first draft summarization of the fiscal year 2025 budget, and we wanted to highlight some of the key components to that draft budget. All right, so the timeline. So today, we're gonna take a first look at it, then we'll come back at the June board meeting, and at that meeting is when we would ask the board to approve a tentative budget for fiscal year '25. That is a legal requirement, and then, once it's been approved by the board, we would put it on display to the public. Historically, that's been just a document available if somebody were to come into the MEC facility. We also put it on our website. And then, when we get to the August meetings, we will, at the Committee of the Whole, we'll review the budget at that point, and we'll detail any changes we've made since May-June for the board. And then, at the August 26th board meeting is when we would ask, we'd hold a public hearing and ask the board to formally adopt that fiscal year '25 budget. And then, as we hit September, by the end of September, the administration would file that with the appropriate agencies, including ISB. All right. So this shows operating revenues by source. Key takeaway here is that when you add up the property taxes plus our other local revenue, puts us solidly into the mid-90% range, which is expected for our setup. The first item I want to review is the local property tax revenue. For this particular budget year, it includes a 5% CPI increase for the 2023 levy. Included in that levy is $15.5 million for new growth. That has an estimated value to D-39 of $462,000. We did receive our final property tax refund recapture amount for this levy year, which is $457,000. That's fairly close to what we've had in the previous couple of years since that law was enacted. And then, the other component is, we set the net collection rate at 98%. And if that were to go up or down in actuality, that each quarter percent is worth about Interest revenue for the operating funds. Few things I wanted to point out. So, going back to fiscal year '22, district was only getting about $97,000 in interest revenue. I think probably the low-water mark ever was probably in that $25,000 to $50,000 range when rates were basically zero. And then, we shot up to 1.1, and then, this current year budget is 1.6 million or 1.65. Estimating would probably end up $100,000, $150,000 over budget when this year wraps up. And when I put together this draft budget, this was probably a good month ago, I had put in there for a million, 1.35 million. That was assuming about a 4% kind of blended rate for the year. But in the last few months since then, we've continued to see a delay in when the Fed will start decreasing rates a quarter percent. So as I look ahead towards finalizing the budget in the later parts of July, I think it's reasonable to expect that I'd probably see some upward adjustment in that fiscal year '25 amount as we get into later July. Currently, when I look at like what our liquid savings accounts receive, money markets, any investments we've recently done in the last month or two, pretty much everything is in that 5.1% to 5.32% range. So that's really good to see. And then, one other thing that will really impact reassessing what this number is ultimately gonna be in August is what happens with that second installment property tax bill. I have been in touch with one of our attorneys and just seeing if they'd heard anything, and the most recent rumor was that the second installment is expected to go out on time on July 1st with an August 1st due date. That would be a pretty significant jump relative to how late the bills were the last two years. And they kind of hedged it a little. The rumor was hedged a little bit in that if it were to be late, instead of a July 1st issue, like sending them out, it probably would be August 1st. So we're probably looking at a due date for that second installment of August 1st or September 1st. Why that, I find to be relevant just in last year's delay and with current interest rates, that probably cost District 39 about $500,000 in interest revenue. So if we can either be on time with the legal statute or even just a month delay, that would potentially be a few hundred thousand extra that I could add into this line item. Corporate personal property replacement taxes. This is another one that, similar to interest, where we've seen some significant fluctuations recently. So if we go back to fiscal year '21, the $700,000, at least from what I was able to find, had been the high-water mark for D-39 for this revenue item. Fiscal year '22 is when we basically doubled and jumped up to 1.5. That was, at least at the time, pretty unexpected because the Illinois Department of Revenue hadn't anticipated that, and then they followed it up with another year essentially the same. Then, the estimate we got back in July or August of 2023, I started to pull that back down. There had been some overdistributions, so they were gonna pull back some of the money as they do their reconciliations in arrears on related income taxes. So, I had a strong suspicion that this year would see a significant decrease. What we've seen so far is actually a much bigger decrease than even what the Illinois Department of Revenue had estimated. We have, as of today, we have one more replacement tax payment to receive for this fiscal year, which will happen like probably the first 10 days of July, and I'm estimating that will probably land about $945,000. So even there, you're pushing $200,000 under what the Illinois Department of Revenue had expected. So for this initial draft budget, I slated $900,000 for fiscal year '25, but like I said, Illinois Department of Revenue will release their estimate. Next item that has been a big part of our local revenue is the KEEP-39 tuition. So for this budget, I've cut it in half since the fee was reduced in half for fiscal year before '25. And then, I've noted the enrollment, similar to I've done in prior years, by school. What was, what are the enrollments for KEEP? What are the enrollments in total? As you might imagine, strong enrollment for KEEP relative to the total. One thing that, as I looked back at my slides from last year, the numbers of KEEP and in total is something like 30 students higher. And while McKenzie and Ramona are very similar to the numbers we had last year, the extra 30 kids was split pretty evenly between Central and Harper. So it seemed like a noteworthy jump, at least thus far. We continue to see students register all through the summer and even some joining the KEEP program. Then, the rest of the local revenue items, you know, we talked quite a bit in the later parts of the winter about student, various student fees and making some adjustments. I just put some numbers in here for reference point. The lunch fee program revenue, the current year, we had a budget of 1.4 million with the fee adjustment. I bumped that up in our draft budget to 1.5. I think there's, you know, potentially an opportunity for that to go a little bit higher in our final budget. We seem to be trending a little bit over budget on the revenue side so far this school year. So I'd like to see how that year, how the year finalizes before we make any further adjustments. Then, on the transportation side, that $704,000 represents what we've collected to date. There really isn't any, anything left to collect. There could be, you know, maybe a spot family here or there that is still making some payments, but I don't expect that $704 to change. So the $704,000 bumped up to 840 is to reflect the adjustment we made in that revenue line item. And as I always do, we close registration for transportation, or at least guaranteeing it like the middle of July. So I have like pretty firm data come final budget, be able to adjust that number up or down based upon actual enrollment. On the state and federal aid side, typically, the state and federal aid will hold steady at the draft stage to what we had in the prior year. Usually, over the summer, ISB, once the state legislator finalizes budgets, will get notified of what our final allocations are. We'll go in there and update those. And one thing I do want to point out, while there might be a tiny bit of like federal SIR/pandemic era funding that ultimately hits fiscal year '25, by and large, it's basically, from D-39's perspective, will basically be gone at the end of fiscal year '24. We do have the ability to spend SIR III through the end of September, but relative to our budget, that will be a small amount. This shows our operating expenditures by object. You look at the bottom 2%, bottom 2%, salaries and benefits hitting right at 80%, that's, I think we've been at like 79, 80, 81, and for the, when we add up those two categories almost every year. When we're budgeting for like salaries and staffing, with the settled contracts that we have, we're able to slot those in, and since we know what they are, SSU is looking at 4.5%, WA at 4.75%, and then, a smaller group of people, the admin and the exempt, we've included estimated increases for next year. And as we're staffing the, or budgeting for the FTE, we're always keeping in mind and keeping an eye on that it is driven by enrollment. And we do look, as an administrative team, we take a quick look at enrollment weekly going back a couple of months. So that's something that, that I keep an eye on throughout the summer. On the benefit side, positive news as we received our final medical and dental insurance renewals for the upcoming school year. Our annual projections that we provide to the board in December include an assumption of 5% every year, increase every year for this area. And when you look at kind of the HMO/PPO blended, we're probably looking at a blended renewal of like 3.5 or 3.6. I think, I think we've typically had a slightly higher enrollment in the HMO program than the PPO, so it's probably looking, on the insurance side, something like 3.5, 3.6, 3.7 when we roll that out. And then, the dental and vision, you see the increases there. IMRF rate is another key item that we take a look at annually. We recently, just in the last week, received our preliminary calendar year 2025 rate. So the IMRF rate works on a calendar year. We budget on a fiscal year, so when we're budgeting, we're budgeting a blended rate. We did bump up a little bit to a little over 6% for calendar year '25. But when you look at the last four years, these four years that I've got listed on this slide, though, by historical standards, those are, those are really great IMRF rates. You know, I think historically, you would see a lot of school districts and other governmental entities that are part of IMRF have rates in the high single digits or even up into the teens. So for us to be at that 5% to 6% rate is great to see. And just for reference, as this rate can go up and down from year to year, 1% change is worth roughly $80,000 in expenditures. All right. Purchase service and supplies. So as we're pulling together various department budgets and everybody's trying to estimate what they're gonna need for purchase services and various types of supplies, the general approach is that, you know, each department or school's budget's gonna increase by CPI. However, when I finalize it, there are definitely some areas or some accounts that will increase by less than CPI, especially if we don't believe that it needs a full CPI increase. But I do want to highlight a few specific exceptions where services or contracts are adjusted, either to what we're known to have or estimated above or below CPI. Insurance is one that, at least more recently, liability and workers' comp has trended above You know, workers' comp, we're in the selfpool. It's a reflection of the whole group combination and also of D-39's experience. Similarly, on the liability side, there's the skip insurance pool. Similarly, you know, it's a little bit of the pool's overall experience combined with D-39. One thing that, in the last probably three, four years, that's really put pressure on the liability renewal has been what's been going on with cyber. What was once a very super cheap policy with high limits has turned into a very expensive policy with increasingly lower limits and less players in the industry as some of those initial carriers that got into it got burned by some pretty large payouts. So we're, we're hopeful that that'll start to, start to smooth out as more and more organizations are forced to implement various security protocols, the skip pool included. Another big area that can be subject to swings or changes is technology. You know, we have replacement cycles. One of the things I think that Tony's done a really good job about is creating, getting everything caught up, but then getting us on, about as even on a replacement cycle so that when we're having conversations about the budget, we don't have one year where the tech budget needs, say, $200,000 or $300,000, and then, a year later, they need $3 million. Where, I think we're in a spot where it's pretty even, where the ups and downs are just a few hundred thousand. And then, same thing would happen on the curriculum side as we were going through and we need to replace various types of curriculum. Same thing with utilities, electricity, natural gas. Probably the biggest that we've seen recently is increases in the, in the cost of electricity. Our special education budget, one light, just one area that I wanted to highlight is our non-D-39 placements. For fiscal year '24, we had a $1.6 million budget for this line item, and then, we're estimating 1.7. The reason I like to highlight this is, even since I've been here, this is an area where we don't always have a lot of control, and we could certainly find ourselves where a student might need an extremely high-cost placement, where 1 point, you know, the 1.6 or the 1.7 might balloon to 2.5 million, just based upon who happens to move in or out of, out of the D-39 boundaries. Capital projects. So for this particular budget year, it's a combination of the projects that we'll be doing this upcoming summer. So starting next month, we have the Ruffa placement over at the junior high, then we have several smaller projects at the junior high, McKenzie, Central, and Ramona. And then, we would also be including in this fiscal year '25 budget, a lot of the architectural, engineering, design work, and then a little bit of the construction for the summer '25, which would be the first floor air conditioning renovations to about 12 or 13 classrooms over at the junior high. So we've got a total capital projects budget for the upcoming year of about $5.86 million. Debt service and transfers. So our debt service fund, any of our principal and interest payments, we're required to pay them out of one fund, so we're looking at 3.1 million. We have two outstanding bond series, and then, we also have our outstanding debt certificates, which we pay from operating funds. So then, we go to the bottom of this slide, the $1,062,000, that is paid from our operating funds. We transfer that over to debt service to, to cover those principal and interest payments. And then, because the capital projects fund does not have a dedicated revenue stream on an annual basis, the operations and maintenance or the operating funds fund those capital projects. So we would be transferring 5.8 million from the operations and maintenance to capital projects. Then, we would have, to help supplement the fund balance and the O&amp;M fund, be looking to transfer 1.5 million from the ad fund to the O&amp;M fund. And the reason for that is, only the O&amp;M fund can transfer money directly to the capital projects fund. So here's a, here's a summary. So we're looking at $78.7 million in total revenue, $74 million in expenditure. So on this slide, two line items or two rows that I, I focus gravitate towards. The third row, projected surplus, $4.75 million for the operating funds. Then, you take out transfers or other net uses for the upcoming year. That puts the operating funds at a deficit of 2.1 million, and then, it leaves us at a fund balance percentage of estimated about 45% for fiscal year '25. So still solidly within, above our target. This graph shows revenues versus expenditures for a five-year period. Always want to see the revenues exceeding the expenditures on an annual basis. And then, this particular slide shows our fund balance going back several years and then what is projected to be for fiscal year '25. And there, there's no expectation that any of our, when we get to our next projections, which would be in December of '24, that any of the future years would, would be below 40%. So I believe that was the last slide.
Yep.
Be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Questions? For Cory?
Yeah. Thank you. Very clearly presented. Thank you very much. I am, I know you said, so the out-years, we don't expect to go below 40, but based on, you know, the numbers that we're working with right now, with no longer having KEEP and going to full-day kindergarten, we'll probably be right around 40, correct? Versus 45 in fiscal year '25?
Yeah, probably closer to 40. And so, like, when, when the board voted in January, the five-year projections I showed, showed it's like some of the furthest years out to be at like 38, 39%. But that held steady the capital projects plan that was presented in December, and the reality is, like, we have this target of 40%. We would adjust that plan as we got to each year.
Right.
You know, the last three years of the five-year, as much as anything, kind of gives you a little bit of a hint of like where you might be going, or if you're kind of getting off the path that you want to. I tend to focus really only maybe like one or two years after the year that we're in. So, because those are usually the projects that we're going to be talking about, right? As we start to get into the fall, we would be talking about, you know, what projects might be for the following summer, which would be 2026. So we would just modify, from what I'm seeing right now, that's the area that we would modify and kind of move things around and prioritize. But of the projects that we've talked about many times at our meetings, between '24, '25, and summer '26, I see all the projects that we had previously committed to getting done. It's really anything after that that we'll have discussions about what gets priority, what, how much money is available when we ultimately get there.
Anything else? I had, I have a question, more of a concern I think we all worry about, which is, you know, what, what aren't we thinking about that could happen in the future? And it occurred to me, the Tier 2, whatever you call it, reform, change, sweetening, it's racing through the legislature right now. I've not looked at the bills, but, I mean, I suspect, because I'm cynical, that if there's gonna be more debt put on the state of Illinois, that they might want to hand a bit of that debt over to the local districts. I just haven't looked. Wonder if you've thought about it?
I haven't, I haven't seen anything come through, like IASBO or any of the, like EdRed or any of the groups that we're a part of or that I'm a part of. So usually, when it gets to the level of, like, hey, this could happen, like, everybody's made aware.
You get told?
Yeah, yeah. So--
That's good.
I haven't seen anything that seems like it's imminent, but that doesn't mean there isn't something that they're really working. I do, do think that, like, the further we go, like, every year that passes, we just accumulate so many more new Tier 2 employees, and the Tier 1s are retiring, and so you're seeing this big shift. I, you know, at some point, the majority will be Tier 2, and like, I think it's reasonable to think something will happen. When that is, who knows?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just more concerned about who pays for it.
Sure.
Thank you. I think that's it, Cory. Thanks so much.
Let me switch over to the other one. All right. All right, so the next topic is, so we have regular and special education transportation contracts with North Shore Transit, and we're currently at a point where our contract would run out at the end of this year, and so we're looking at one-year renewals for both. One of the things I want to point out to keep in mind, legislation became effective January 1 of '24, and it changed how school districts are able to do their contracts. So what had previously been in place for a very long time was, you would go out to bid, and you would bid for three years if you were outsourcing your transportation, and then, you would have the opportunity to extend for two years. And then, once you got to the fifth, after your fifth year, you could do one-year renewals with your existing provider forever, assuming that no other outsourced company reached out to you and asked for you to go out to bid. So in some cases, like, there was a variety of approaches, but I'm aware of some of the school districts that it had been 10 or 20 years since they had gone out to bid because they would just do one-year renewals, and nobody would ever require, ask them to go out to bid, maybe because of location, or maybe because of the size of the district, could be a variety of reasons. Well, the new legislation says, the longest you can go without going out to bid is 10 years. So we're currently at a point with regular transportation that we potentially have three years left, but that before we would be required to bid, and four years on this transportation side. Where we are at, from my perspective, what I'm recommending is that we would renew for one year for each of these, and then, as we get into the fall, particularly on the regular transportation side, we can see-- see what our sign up or our ridership looks like in light of what we've done with our fees to families the last, say, three or four years, and get a sense of where that's going. And then that may drive some conversations in a few different ways, but, and then we could potentially look at going out to bid, because at that point, we would only have two years left on the regular side. And if we go out to bid, then it would reset our 10-year window. And I think if a district is ever like thinking about like changing or doing something that's different, one-year going out to bid is probably the best time. So that's a little bit of background on what has changed with contracts. So the first slide I have is what I wanted to show everyone is kind of going back to before the pandemic, when it was very common for everyone to get 1%, 2%, maybe 4% like renewal rates for transportation. Just wanted to see like comparing regular versus special ed, what were we looking at? And so you can see going from 2018 to 19 with the 6.25% for regular transportation, that would mean we've increased 38% on the regular side and 33.8% on the special ed side. So as I'm sitting there thinking about it and just talking with North Shore and negotiating what this year's renewal might look like, and thinking like, well, how does those numbers, it seem like large numbers, like, well, how do they compare to like some of the other things that I can either, that I'm either aware of, been able to verify, or I've seen myself? So another thing for reference, I've got the transportation expenditures. So just to give someone an idea of how large our expenditures are, so on regular transportation, you see two years of actual expenditures, and then I've estimated the fiscal year '24 at $1,080,000. And then with the expected increase, what that might look like. On the regular side, we've been pretty steady with about 14 round trip routes. So that's pretty even, like when you go year by year. On the special education side, I've estimated where I think this year will end, and then what that might look like. The one caveat, or what makes budgeting or estimating a little tricky is, we're probably always going to have special education routes that pick up kids locally and bring them to our buildings. But the number of out placements where we're transporting them, you know, is it something that's just one or two neighboring suburbs over, or is it something where we're driving halfway across, you know, the metro area on a daily basis? So these can jump up or down quite a bit by year. So the first area I wanted to take a look at was just what has been happening with North Shore's like driver pay over the last few years. So this is a shorter period than what I did for the fees that we get charged, because I wanted to stick to dollar amounts that I was definitely aware of. So just from 2021 to what is expected to be the pay rate for their drivers next year, we've, just in that short period, 44% increase in driver pay. And the one, if there is a positive from talking with North Shore, the two, like basically the last few years going up to $2 a year has worked. They've been able to get drivers. You know, we haven't had instances where we get called and bus routes just aren't able to run because there aren't drivers. So these have worked, but they've continued to need them, because if they don't, other companies that hire drivers would hire away their staff. Cost of purchasing a bus. So one of the things that I think most school districts that have in-house bussing or outsourced companies like North Shore, as the pandemic hit and cost and ridership was really extreme, one of the first things they, a lot of these companies did was kind of pull back for a year, two, or three on the volume of buses that they purchased. Well, you can only do that for so long. And I've heard that from some of my peers that work at school districts that operate their bussing in-house. And so North Shore was telling me that the bus, the cost of buying buses has just gone up huge amounts. And I was curious to see how close some of their percentages were. And so I had looked up another district that I know that buys several buses every year. And, you know, North Shore, what they, the numbers they provided me was a 56% over that period. The district that I looked up was at 45%. So, and in both cases, the both places had very similar philosophies. The school district I looked up here, their philosophy is to primarily buy buses that are one or two years old. From what I've heard from North Shore, that is primarily what they do as well. The other thing is, the fuel that drives these vehicles, I wanted to take a look, I've constantly heard from North Shore, that diesel and propane and the energy costs were really challenging for them. And so I was able to look, go to a government website and look up what the diesel fuel cost per gallon and propane cost were going back in 2019, and then what it is, I think this was back in late April. And so we see 31 and 46% increase. And then a couple other things that may not necessarily be able to verify independently of what North Shore's telling me, but just from what we have seen on the medical insurance side, and knowing generally how the medical insurance renewals occurs, you know, combination of your group, your employee group's experience, and, you know, what kind of services or, in many cases, like prescriptions people need, you know, I'm sure that they've experienced the same challenges in that area. They've indicated that liability insurance has been particularly challenging with their increases. We have seen that it's typically been high single digits, sometimes pushing 10, 11, 12%. And then the one thing that was a little surprising that going into the renewal, you know, school districts have generally provided time off to their employees. The one thing that might be a little different in talking with North Shore is this new Cook County paid leave law, they had not. So this is a brand-new thing. They don't have a choice. They will be required. And they're saying it adds roughly 2% to their cost for their employees. And they hadn't previously offered that. So overall, I felt like after diving in and looking at, you know, what the, with the one-year renewals that we're looking at, combined with what we've seen over the last five or six years, and some of the other factors that, you know, that were, I was able to confirm on, confirm myself, I feel a lot better about recommending a one-year renewals for 6.25% and 7% for next year. So that's all I have for these renewals, and I'm happy to answer any more questions.
Well, thanks for doing all that diligence. It sounds like the final answer is it's just too bad.
Well, I mean.
Right.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, that was kind of my sentiment as I was like having conversations with them early on. I'm like, it's kind of, you know, you have an idea in your head of like what it might be, and you're like, really? Like, we're still facing this. And that was kind of what led me to start like digging in and like, okay, at some point, right, like we're going to get, I hope, we're going to get back to more reasonable renewals and not just transportation, but a lot of services that we receive. And so I just wanted to see, you know, what it looked like over the last five or six years.
Well, thank you. Any other thoughts, comments?
No, my only comment is, thank you. I think it's really helpful to see this breakdown. And personally, I have heard a lot of talk about the expense to ride our buses and when the communication came out this year. And we all know that costs are going up and that we are subsidizing 35% to 40%, but having this level of detail and seeing those increases from 35% to 50% across the board since 2019, it just is very helpful and reassuring in the decisions that we have made from a budget standpoint. So thank you.
Yes, that's.
Okay. So the next step is, next Monday, we will put both renewals up for vote next week. That's all I have for today.
All we got?
Hey. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory.
So we're moving on to strategy. Mrs. Schneider-Pabes.
Yeah, I'm turning over Dr. Pramus Goli for committee updates.
Well, thank you. We are privileged to have with us Katie Lee today, who will give us an update on curriculum committee work this year and some of what the board and our community can expect moving forward. Katie?
Bless you. Good afternoon. I thought I would also use this opportunity to talk a little bit about what initiates a curriculum review as well, just so that you have some context, you know, moving forward and also reflecting in the past. So the three curriculum committee updates that I will focus on are mathematics, social studies, and English language arts. So what initiates a curriculum review is a combination of factors. One, every district typically uses a cycle of years. So it might be five, it might be six, barring no disruptions. So when a review is started, it's typically because either standards have been updated or revised and released by the State Board of Education, and/or mandates, instructional units of study mandates have been updated, or some additions have been made, or there's been some guidance provided by Illinois State Board of Education for all districts to consider. Another would be in the area of instruction, where what are the current best practices? Have there, have, you know, the way we instruct a particular content area changed? So for example, when we had our standards for science, we went from, you know, stand and deliver to inquiry-based. Social studies as well. So there's a lot of reasons why some best practices are, that are presented, require a curriculum review, and whether our instruction or our materials needs some change. And of course, it's always going to be grounded in our data, our students. So there might be just a quality reflection review, but it also might be because there are subsets of our data that show us we're not meeting our students' needs with the materials that we have. So how do we support our teachers in getting them to their hands? And therefore, they will then be able to deliver the instruction, and we are monitoring progress for students, whether it be in achievement or in growth. So you'll see these repeated in the lime green bars to illustrate for you. But here's also another piece of information against broadly, but these are the curriculum review process components. Not all of these components are part of a review every single time. It depends on what the review requires or what the goals are. But essentially, we need to, if new or revised learning standards are released, then we do a comparison. We do what we call a crosswalk. What do we have currently in place? What is new? What is the same? So sometimes the district has realized as we do this review of the new learning standards, wow, we're only off by a few. Everything else is the same. And so we don't want to or need to spend all that time looking at all of the components, but we could really fine tune that one. So it might not be a review, a full review, but it might be some adjustments that are made with the team of teachers for that particular grade level or that area. But these are definitely all of the components that we look for. The one important one is representation from all of our staff who are involved in teaching the content area, as well as, you know, even though we have representatives on a committee, we really value the feedback that we receive from all of the teachers. So that process of seeking input, gathering feedback through the representatives is really important to us, so that's part of our process as well. We always try to develop a materials criteria, so that we're not just saying, oh, we like it, it looks pretty, you know? There are, there's actually reasons why the components are a match for us and what we look for, not just the student experience, but the teacher experience as well. It's important that we support both. So then when we finally decide on what our core district-provided resources are going to be, then we start creating the curriculum maps. And then the first year of implementation is always a review and reflection as we teach. Okay, so with that in mind, starting with kindergarten through fourth grade math, the area that prompted us to do a review was instruction and data. And really, the strategic plan had an impact with our focus on tier-one instruction and interventions with our tiered system of supports. We identified a student need, and that need was engaging in mathematical discourse. How are they able to collaborate with one another, discuss how to solve problems? They were very good computationally. They were good at a lot of other areas, but we needed to hone in on that. And it's demonstrated through our data. Our data with IR, if we break it down into its components, we really realize foundationally, we need to start at kindergarten in order to support this skill. And as they grow older and enter into the upper grades, they're building upon that skill. And so when they are at the grade level, third grade and up, when they are trying to explain their thinking and writing, those were really the components that we saw, that we needed support above any other area. And again, the materials review really is to support both the teacher experience and the student experience. And so these are the wonderful members. I can't thank them enough. I'll only say this once, but as you know, our curriculum review committee meetings predominantly are after school. So after our students leave, after they make sure that the students are, you know, safely on their way home, these representatives, our teaching staff and our administrators who join the committees, really spend the time to engage with us after hours. So it's really a lot of wonderful work. And these are the members for the K4 Math. And this is an idea for you, the timeline. The fact that this is from October 2022 all the way to June 2023, that was last academic school year. And the reason I'm sharing this with you now is to give you an idea of some additional components that we keep in mind. So each of the committees will have a kickoff. We always ground ourselves in our national professional organizations with research and readings and understandings to develop that common understanding. So this one was with the Principles to Action reading from the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. We engage our committee members in developing criteria for evaluating resources. We talk about and reflect about instruction. We share the feedback from our colleagues. And then we review a list of vendors that are offering all of the components that we say that we want, and they say that they have. And then we narrow down our choices using our criteria, and then some decisions are made and some professional development or learning opportunities are thought through. So for this one, just to give you an example, you know, even though the work was completed last year, this particular resource was the best that they found, that the teachers really resonated with, that had all of the components and good ratings. But it was in transition. So they were still in second edition, we're on the cusp of third edition. So the members really helped us delineate how we wanted to roll this out in our district. So there were two components that were already finished and completed. There was number corner and the intervention program. Number corner is the piece of Bridges Math Third Edition that really focuses on those number talks or those math talks, the discourse that we were talking about. It's very intentional in the way they introduce concepts. And then the intervention program is something that we really needed, and they had a very robust, good process. And it wasn't by grade levels, really by concept, which helps us differentiate. And then because we wanted to wait for the third edition, we chose to implement Bridges Math Third Edition. And then because we wanted to wait for the third edition, we chose to implement Bridges Math Third Edition in the core classroom next year, starting fall. The reason, or the feedback that we received about this is that our elementary teachers, they deliver instruction in many different content areas. And they found this particular rollout very intentional and manageable. And so we were happy to do it, but also it was a little bit out of our hands. We wanted the third edition to be in full completion before we actually asked our teachers to engage in that. Okay. The next one that was prompted by standards and mandates. So our fifth through eighth grade social studies teachers, representatives have met together. And our identified need was that the Illinois State Board of Education, hmm, I say, I say fall of 2023. Actually, it was, the final version was released in January of 2024. It was intended to be fall of 2023, the new social science standards. But we received the final version. We also were noted that, notified that there were some new instructional mandates in our efforts to include multiple voices and include diverse, what we call human stories in our curriculum committee. There's, there were more and more groups being added. And so what we wanted to do is ensure that our current curriculum or our future curriculum would do it authentically as possible and do it in a meaningful way. So that was really another reason that it was prompted. And so the committee members, you know, the priority is the inquiry embedded learning. But two other that we were very passionate about, the historical chronology being lost on our student learning. We wanted to make sure that we provide that and, and help students intentionally that one event follows the other. Sometimes when you go full inquiry-based, a lot of the events are just brought together so that you can analyze and bring about themes. And so we, we also believe in that too. That is the best instructional approach. But one of the priorities that they really identified was the historical chronology and we wanted to do that. The other one is the balance of human stories. We reviewed who is being represented in our curriculum and we wanted to make sure that there was a balance and, and make sure that we have representation. It helps that our instructional mandates ask us to, and therefore, we want to do it in an authentic, meaningful way. Anyway, and again, the materials and materials review of the teacher needs and the student needs are the same. So these are our committee members. We try to get representation from each of the grades. And as you can see, most of the seventh and eighth grade teachers of social studies are, are, you know, members. We also have some administrators. And then we wanted to engage, at least a representative from each house of fifth and sixth grade. And that's why we have the composition that you see here. So our social studies curriculum review timeline, we did the same. In October, we launched, making sure that we were grounded in our learning with the National Council for the, for the social studies. It's awkward to say, but that's exactly how they're called. I checked three times. Powerful Teaching and Learning Reading, because it really does call out some of those beliefs that they feel that should be embedded. And so we went through the same process, a very similar process. Where we are now in May is we will be meeting together for a scope and sequence development and looking at some supplemental materials. Our current finalists that you see in fifth grade, I wanted to honor their developmental readiness with TCI Social Studies Alive, it's called. It's a finalist because we still need to do one more, one more check-in and, and work with the company. And then sixth through eighth grade, Identify Traverse. It's curriculum-based in, or from the company Imagine Learning. And so we will be doing the same thing there with the summer of 2024. There might be a project if needed. And we are thinking that we can implement, reflect, and make some adjustments in the fall. If after our final meeting, we decide to adjust that, then we may have to do that. But for right now, that is our plan. Okay, so in the area of guidance, instruction, and data, our kindergarten through second grade are what we call our primary grade for English Language Arts. So there were some guidance sources that were released. We have new Illinois Literacy Plan that was released on the beginning of this year. And I have my binder right here. And also, there's been some new research on how reading skills develop and, and how we teach our students how to read. And so in the beginning stages. And so the committee's priorities, we identified actually last spring. You know, it wasn't just our data, but it was also our teachers who really identified we were missing a resource to help them teach, you know, most effectively. And so the one component that was missing and that we didn't have an abundance of were decodable texts. And that is the one that will address the sound two-letter correlation in practice that our students needed. So we wanted to not wait and we wanted to provide our teachers that. So it was a really good collaborative decision-making process there. And then we focused though on foundational skills for K2 this current year. Again, looking at teacher needs and student needs. We did this in part because the guidance and the research and evidence-based recommendations that came out. And it came from a, a multiple sources, actually. It came from our Federal Department of Education and their Institute of Education Sciences and the research that they came out. So those three bullet points are straight from that report. It is cited in the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan as well as the basis of what the University of Florida Literacy Institute uses as their work. And then the Reading League is an independent organization that is, their charge, their mission is to really advocate for the sciences of reading and ensuring that our teachers are developed as well as our readers are developed at the same time. So those, those are the skills that we were really focusing in on. Here are the wonderful representatives. I can't tell you enough, especially in our primary grades. They have invested, you know, part of last spring, also all this year. And they will also be engaging in future work that I will share with you. As you can see, this timeline has a couple of colors. The blue represents the past academic year and what I was trying to illustrate with last spring. And then August, we started looking at, you know, not only how to support them and using the decodable text, but also to start looking at what should our core curriculum be for the foundational skills, starting in kindergarten through second grade. And so those are all outlined there. We made a decision about the foundational program. What's great is, I don't know if this looks familiar from a prior slide, but UFLY Foundations. It's actually developed based on research and continuously being updated by the University of Florida Literacy Institute. It is mentioned in our comprehensive plan. It is one that has been, you know, very touted as it helps teachers develop as well as our readers develop. The reason why this was a key component compared to others, there's two. One, when you have teacher preparation programs that have not had a robust line of education in this area, and but we are, we have our teachers here. So by doing and by implementing this core curriculum, our teachers are also honing and enhancing the knowledge they already have. And so it's really nice that it provides some professional learning while implementation supports our students. We did a kickoff as an introduction to UFLY with our classroom teachers, our learning behavior specialists, our reading specialist, and our English Language learner teachers. They were all part of that audience. And then we also conducted all those texts that we purchased with the decodables. We did an alignment to UFLY Scope and Sequence so that they really help our teachers understand which decodables will be the best to support the practice. So we will be implementing the foundational skills program next year, starting in the fall. And we will also embark on a K8 ELA curriculum review. And so a committee will be formed. So you might be wondering what is different about this than the other. So foundational skills, our area of focus was in kindergarten, first and second grade because it is almost like an overlay. I know that people watching can't see me. But if you look at foundational skills, starting with a non-reader all the way to second grade, right? We're laying a really strong foundation of that decoding, being able to read, make sounds and letter connections, all of that. But we also have the, the reading component and the writing component of English Language Arts that spans the full K8. So there's an extra layer that our primary teachers really do a wonderful job. You know, delivering instruction in that is, that is needed to support the reading, learning, and also the writing work. And so we're going to do a full review of our core curriculum next year as well. And that is all. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you very much. It's a lot. Questions? This all sounds so exciting. And I think it's obviously been a lot to take on and it's going to be great to see it all in action. I wonder if you've been able to find schools nearby that implement any of these so that teachers can learn from, or even from further away, and learn how it's going for them?
Yes. So part of, part of the process too is some of our reps can. We did not do this with social studies because we had our township partners. But for Bridges, the second edition, we were able to have teachers go and visit other districts. Some of our current teachers on staff have experience as well from the districts that they've come from. And so it was really, it was nice to have them have that opportunity to discuss and review those. So visitations and observations were definitely part of it. Our, we have a township partner that is also doing the third edition Bridges. We all make different decisions, but we happen to be the same. And so we're launching at the same time as they are. So I think it'll be a good opportunity for our staff and their staff to talk and articulate and really share experiences with one another in that way too. So.
I have a question for you. So after implementation of the curriculum or the new curriculum, is there a chance for teachers sort of feedback after they've used it for a while?
Yes, it actually is throughout. It could be every year. But we intentionally set up meetings within the first year of implementation. So they, they will teach a unit. We will meet and talk with the representatives that could gather all that information from their colleagues and then updates and revisions also. So for example, when I shared with you the social studies, next year, we'll be implementing the curriculum, but we need to come back and say, this worked, this didn't, there's a gap here, we need something more. So really, a curriculum map is never quote-unquote finished. We call them living documents because we will go in and adjust and revise and update as needed. Most often, it happens in the area of assessments because we want to make sure that the assessment that's designed or that's provided by the resource is actually assessing what we want to know about our students. So we'll do those kinds of reflections too. It doesn't, it never ends. If you know our teachers, they are constantly reflecting on their practice and providing feedback and, and asking for, we need this and we need that. So you know they're constantly engaged in that type of reflection.
Yeah, it's a question. So in terms of, let's say for, you know, like K through two ELA. So teacher feedback is one piece of it. And when you refer to the assessments, are you talking to, to like state testing or MAP testing or, you know, what, what other factors are considered as when you're determining, you know, whether or not it worked or accomplished the, what you would like to see through the change?
Yes. So if you recall in the strategic plan, we have our early literacy indicators. We could look at that data in a, a much more disaggregated way. So by classroom, by groups of students. That's really what prompted us to include, like start talking about, hey, what's going on in kindergarten, first grade? Because by second grade, when we looked at our MAP measures, they were on par, if not doing really well. And so there was some question about how do we understand this data in K1? That is a different assessment platform. And then marry that information that we see in MAP. But then also talk about classroom performance data. So we were in the middle of all that when the conversation around the sciences of reading, you know, was starting to emerge. Yeah. So, yeah, that data.
Who knows?
I have something. So, um, thank you, Katie. That's a lot of work. We appreciate it and appreciate all you do. I mean, it's, in my view, it's kind of the most important thing. So I just, I do, I worry a lot just about the current political environment. And I thank goodness that we are on a K through eight board and not like a college board or a high school board. So I, and I don't, I don't know what to do about it. You know, just the politicization of our society and the polarization. So I really have no positive suggestions other than I think it's a problem. And, and I know it's a problem you guys, I think, deal with really well. So I, that's all I got. I don't, I really don't have an answer. I just, I, I know that when this topic comes up, you know, it, people immediately go into their brains and think, oh, what's not being taught, what's taught? You know, what ideology is it? And, you know, I have a lot of faith in the management group here that, that we think through these things to try to be as neutral as possible.
I think our, if you were to ask our upper elementary teachers of social studies, where that is their singular content area, you know, they know that their job or what they want to do is instill a way for our students to practice skills that will allow them to critically think about any topic. And so an understanding context is really important. And so in whatever settings that we present, that is their goal. So it's not to be political by any means or take a side, which is sometimes challenging because as an adult, you know, I think our educators have thoughts and feelings that they really do keep the students at the center and know that they're developing skills. And so it's not something that could be debatable.
Appreciate that.
Sure.
Good. Thank you. All right. Thank you. This would be an opportunity for any members of the audience to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? All right. Then we're going to move on to old business. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? All right. Then I will seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel, special education, individual student matters, and collective negotiation.
I moved to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel, the placement of individual students. And what was the third one?
Collective.
Collective negotiations. Never remember.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabebs?
Yes.
John Ziesrady?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes. Motion carries. We are now adjourned to executive session. The time is 4:28 PM.